Okay, welcome to the September Board Meeting of the Monterey Public Library Board of Trustees. We'll start with the roll call.
Trustee Joshi.
Present.
Trustee Petty.
Chair.
Vice Chair Thompson.
Here.
Chair Moreau.
Here. Okay, we move to the consent items, which just consists of the minutes of the August 27th meeting. Any comments or any corrections or additions to those minutes?
Yeah, hang on a second.
Say again?
I said, "Hang on."
Something in the message that I wanted to... It sounds to me like you're hearing my echo all over again, right? How many times is you hearing me? Twice or three times?
Just once with a little bit of an echo.
Okay.
So you have some suggestions on the minutes, or?
Yeah, I thought I had one when I... Let's go forward. I'm not finding it now, so let's just go ahead. But just go ahead.
Okay, so...
If there are no comments on minutes, I'll be glad to move approval of the consent calendar, including item number one.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so now we vote.
And yes, trustee Joshi.
Yes.
Trustee Petty.
Hi.
Vice Chair Thompson.
Yes.
Chair Moreau.
Yes.
Thank you.
So now we move to public comments. So this is the chance for the public to speak for a maximum of three minutes on any subject not on the agenda.
Yes, so for any viewers watching, we do encourage you to watch this on YouTube Live, which has a short delay of approximately 10 seconds. You can watch the viewing at youtube.com/cityofmonterey. To make a public comment when viewers are watching live on YouTube or Channel 25, see the announcement on your screen, please dial 831-582-6500. Again, that number is 831-582-6500. And you'll also find this number on the chyron on the screen. Please press * 5 to raise your hand, and you will be added to the queue to speak. Callers will have three minutes and will be automatically muted until it is your turn to speak. Please remember to turn off any background noise or move to a different room if necessary. One last time, that phone number is 831-582-6500. And Chair Moreau, there are no callers at this time.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move on to new business. We'll be taking public comments after each of the new business items again. Okay, so the next item is to receive a report on RFID, radio frequency identification technology, and provide direct to staff. So Inga, you want to?
Sure, sure. So thank you for this opportunity to talk to library trustees about RFID, radio frequency identification technology. So as you know, we've lost 80% of our staff, and the library facility is closed to the public, although we've got a great sidewalk service going. So we are, and I'm working with a library subcommittee on this as well, but all the staff are working with me on thinking about how do we move forward? What kind of library service will we have when we reopen? And how can we take services that are the most popular with our customers and provide them in a way that provides better customer satisfaction, but also is provided more efficiently and effectively by staff with the anticipation that we will have fewer staff members moving forward? So RFID is one of the technologies that lots of different libraries have introduced. Back in 2016, over 75% of the Bay Area libraries had introduced it when San Francisco Public Library moved to switch over to RFID technology. And what it helps with is it helps with handling circulation, that's the check-in and checkout of materials, and then also the inventory control, and also the reduction of items going missing and items being stolen. So what is it exactly? Well, right now, we use a system where we have a barcode label on an item, and we also have a security strip in an item. So when a staff member is checking something out to a customer, they need to pick up that item, wand it under a barcode reader, slide it under another machine that desensitizes the security strip, and hand it to the customer. So that's the process that's required with each physical item that's being borrowed. With RFID, you don't use barcode labels. Instead, you use a RFID tag, which is a passive item, and you use a reader. And so because it's not dependent on optical orientation, you just set a stack of books down, DVDs, whatever they are, on a pad, and then all of them are checked out simultaneously. It's really not simultaneously, but it appears from a normal observer as if it happens all at once. And then the person leaves the building. If an item is accidentally missed when the person goes through the gates, then the gate lights up, and on the screen, the staff member sees, "Oh, you know, Goodnight Moon wasn't checked out." And so then you can ask the customer to come back and say, "Sorry, we missed one. And do you have Goodnight Moon?" And then we check it out to the customer. At present, when a customer sets off an alarm, and often it's the mom with the toddlers in tow or the dad with all these bags of books, will say, "Uh-oh, one of them didn't get checked out. Please wait." And then we go through all of the items again to look and see which one didn't check out. So that creates embarrassment on the part of the customer, and then it creates lines and, you know, things back up in terms of getting things checked out. When something is ready to be returned, what happens is a customer slides the item through a slot, and it's with RFID, it's automatically checked in. And currently in our system, when somebody returns something, then the staff member has to pick it up and do the same process of activating the barcode, sliding the item over a machine that activates the security strip, and then put it on the shelf. So the additional benefit that RFID has is it helps with inventory. So we don't know when our last inventory was conducted. We estimate that it's been at least 30 years since we've done an inventory of our collection. What happens with RFID is you can take a wireless wand and walk down the shelves, and the wand will send you a little message on your screen if something's out of order on the shelf. And I've watched videos where people, to demonstrate this, you know, have somebody leave the room. They hide the books in different places. The person comes back with their wand, and they walk along, and then they find where the item is. So this helps with the reduction in the number of things that we have to declare missing in the collection because we can't find them because they have been shelved creatively. And you can imagine when you have 105,000 items, if something is just a few places off, it can be like trying to find a needle in a haystack. So anyway, so that would, those are some of the advantages of an RFID system. What are the disadvantages? Primarily, the disadvantage is cost. So I provided a spreadsheet that explains some of the costs associated with RFID and then some of the savings. And I was thinking if we wanted to take a look at that, Francesca could share it on her screen. Would that be helpful for folks to look at it?
It's a one-page, one-into-cent, right?
Yes, exactly.
So when she's finished, and when Inga's finished, we'll all ask questions because I'm sure we all have many.
Sure, sure. Okay, so can you make it a little larger, Francesca? Okay, so the purpose of this report is just to tell you about RFID, tell you about some rough numbers that we've gotten, and then to find out if this is something that the board would like staff to pursue further or not. So in this cost sheet that I gave you, there's some initial RFID costs. And last year, we got a couple of, probably called soft quotes. We didn't do an RFP. So we just asked a couple of vendors, what would you charge for our system? And so the prices came in, the low one was around $50,000, the higher one was $60,000. And what that includes is it includes self-check machines, it includes the security gates, and includes the pads that are readers that you have at your staff desks, and the tags, and some training. And then we added a cost estimate of how much it would cost to have staff put tags in. And it takes between 10 and 30 seconds to tag your collection item by item. I saw one estimate where they said, "Oh yeah, we do 450 items an hour." But I thought, well, as we're starting out, it would be a little slower than that. So anyway, and then I watched a video today where a couple, a team said, "Well, we're gonna do $60,000 today." So, you know, apparently it's very fast. Anyway, so the staff cost would be between $12,000 and $18,000 perhaps. And then it's always a good idea, if you're gonna touch every piece in your collection, you want to go through it first and see if you have some things that you should get rid of that aren't relevant anymore. And so we thought that we should do some weeding, and so I have an estimate of what the weeding cost would be. So that would be initial outlay, but then, of course, there's the ongoing costs of a system like that. So there would obviously be some kind of maintenance fees on the equipment. One company provided that information. They said it'd be $2,600. The other company didn't provide maintenance figures, so it could be much higher depending on who we go with. And then, of course, there's the cost of the tags because you're tagging every item. Right now, we spend 11 cents to 63 cents on the tags that we're putting in our books that are security tags. And so RFID tags cost between 11 cents and 13 cents, so that evens out. So it wouldn't be like an additional charge for us. And then, of course, there's the question of Pacific Grove. So right now, we circulate Pacific Grove items and Monterey items in our library. If Pacific Grove wanted to convert to RFID, that'd be great. But if they didn't want, if they couldn't afford to, or chose not to, then the items from Pacific Grove would have to be checked out the old way, and the items from Monterey would be checked out the new way. So one of the vendors suggested, well, you could tag Pacific Grove items that come into your building. That's one way libraries have handled that sort of situation. So, but what would be the cost? And then would Pacific Grove pay for that? Would they be able to pay for that, or we pay for that? Then there's the estimated annual savings for RFID. So we have a lease on our current self-check machines, which I should mention also, our technology that's no longer being upgraded, unfortunately. So even though we have told the vendor that we're leasing the equipment from, it's not working very well for us, they've said, "Sorry, that's old technology. It's obsolete, so we can't upgrade it for you or improve it for you." And also, they're having to make, the service technicians have had to make some parts for us because they're not creating those parts for those machines anymore. Anyway, so we wouldn't have to pay the current self-check lease, and we would save some staff time in the amount of time it takes to check in and check out an item. So that, again, is a rough estimate. The savings due to reduction in loss or theft. So David keeps track of the items that are lost or stolen, and he's able to quantify what replacement costs would be. Over a 24-month period, it was over $10,000 of things that have disappeared. What we think is a lot of customers are walking, when the library's open, walk out the door thinking that they've used the self-check machine properly. And then when the alarm goes off, the staff wave and say, "Have a nice day," because there's a big line, and they don't want to stop and embarrass the customer. And so things leave the library without being fully checked out. Some of those come back, some of those don't. And then for the other part of RFID, so that would be one phase of RFID. Another phase of RFID is for installing an automated materials handler, which is something that you can put in your building for check-in. And imagine a conveyor belt, sort of how they sort the mail in post offices. And I forget, I think Amazon or something uses the same product. Anyway, when somebody returns something in a return slot, if you have an automated materials handler, then it goes on a little conveyor belt, and it gets sorted into the youth basket, or the adult basket, or the tinkle basket, or whatever kinds of bins you've set up. And then what that saves for us is, right now, we have a person, all of the hours that we're open, and also before we open, we have a person checking in things. And so that would save that position. And so I think that Harish had asked, if you have a three-bin system or a five-bin system, why is it you just save one position? And basically, it's because you don't need to have that person handling each item and sitting at that check-in station. Instead, you just have somebody who checks in for like 15 minutes per hour that you're open, just making sure everything looks like it's sorting correctly on your sorting machine. And then you have your pages, the people who normally would spell. And then you have your pages, the people who normally would sell, take the bins away and shelve the materials. So that's how the estimated annual savings for an automated materials handler works. I think that pretty much covers the pros and the cons at this point. And concerns, I guess, at one point, there had been, early on with this technology, there had been some concern about privacy, thinking that people could drive around with one of these reader wands and see, you know, oh, at that house, are there any library books? And what are those library books? Oh, they've checked out a bunch of books on, on how to do a divorce. So they must be getting a divorce, that kind of a thing. So the studies show that the, the range is only 18 inches. So a person couldn't be going around and doing that. And then also, libraries, because privacy is so important in libraries, they've set standards for what kinds of information appears on the tag. And the information that appears on the tag is a barcode. And so unless you work for the library, you wouldn't know what a 16-digit barcode, what book that corresponded with. So that privacy issue is not a concern. And of course, you're not putting these tags on library cards. So it's not as if a person could be finding out the name and address of somebody through RFID service. So in conclusion, that's a little bit about what we know about RFID, some of the reasons we think it might be a worthwhile thing to explore. And then we would like to know if the library board would like us to pursue it. Thanks.
Okay, so let's open up for questions, clarifications, anything that anybody has. I know, Harish, you had your hand up, so let's.
Yes. I have two. One is, how long would it take you to implement this whole thing, from the beginning to when it's ready to go online? How long would it take?
Oh, what a good question. Yeah, let me see.
Months, years?
No, no, no. I have that number because if you estimate that you have 105,000 items and it takes 30 seconds to tag each item, how many hours would it take? But I, I don't. Yeah, so I'd have to look into it. But of course, one thing is, is first you would have to do, if you wanted to do this, first you'd have to go through the bidding process and then select your vendor. And then you'd have to negotiate with your vendor for how quickly the materials could be delivered. And then you have to tag your collection, train your staff, and then you go live. One of the benefits that the vendors talk about is you don't have to close your library while you're tagging. Of course, we are closed, so it seems like the perfect time to do that. And in fact, Coronado Public Library down in Southern California recently started reopening under the governor's new restrictions. And they were pleased to say they'd re-carpeted and they'd installed RFID for their customers.
My second question is, if you're not putting new tags in the library cards, then will we still have the old scanners to scan the library cards? And if so, is that not? If you still have the scanner for the library card, and then in addition to that, because it seems like there's a lot of equipment that you.
At desk? That's a good question. Yeah, I hadn't thought of that, so I'm not quite sure how that works. I, I assume that you do have your scanners as a backup, your barcode scanner as a backup. Also, we're anticipating that we wouldn't have as many stations as we have right now. We have a, a public desk where there are four different stations that could be staffed. While we know that's not a reality going forward, we'll have far fewer people staffing our desks.
So it sounds like what I'm gonna have to do is to first scan my card under that reader and then move the pile of books past it.
Okay, so it's built into the self-check machine. So we didn't really talk a whole lot about the self-check machine. But the self-check machine that would be provided, that would be an RFID machine, would have a scanner and it would have the reader that's the pad, and it would have a printer, all built into sort of a fancy, nice-looking unit, similar to what we have right now. A lower, a less expensive way to go, though, I know, is that you can just take an existing computer, an existing scanner, and plug in the reader and use your printer. And that's sort of the less expensive route. So then you're just adding that pad. No, thank you.
Okay, any more questions, Harish? Or shall we move on to the next person?
Uh, uh, no, I'm done, thank you.
You're good? Okay, Bob or Jim have questions? Uh, Bob?
Okay. Can you unmute me? I wanna see if this works now the normal way because I'm getting, I'm hearing myself a second after I talk because I'm using the phone.
Yep, Bob, if you like to see whether your idea works, you have to unmute yourself on the computer. We can unmute for you, unfortunately. There we go.
We can't hear you, though.
Okay, I'll go back to the telephone. There, there are so many reasons, in my opinion, why we should pursue RFID that I hardly know where to start. The, the couple main ones to me are, number one, the system we have as... Are you hearing an echo or just me?
Everything's fine.
Pardon me?
Justy, I don't hear it. I don't hear an echo.
Okay, good. The, the, number one, as Inga described, the system we have now is not just old and archaic. It is virtually unreparable. The support for the technology is gone or will be gone soon. And it just makes no sense to continue using something that is so integrally important to the library that is, you know, not working, obsolete, there are problems. And we could go on and on just talking about that. So that, to me, is one reason why we should be pursuing RFID. Number two is in keeping with the general thinking of the Ad Hoc Planning Committee, that whatever we want to do now should be something that can be continued more efficiently and, and more effectively in the future. I think, and I know the city manager's office has said that an initial expense for something that, that has long-range savings attached to it is a good idea. Even though it'll cost more in the short run, if the expectation is reasonable that it'll cost less in the long run, then that's a good investment. And that's the way I look at RFID. Inga talked about numerous ways in which it would save money and also improve the service. So I think those, just generally speaking, are reasons why we should pursue this and with, with all hate. Because like Inga pointed out, right now, we're down anyway. And this would be a good time to do something that would be as big a deal as this. And so mostly, the system we have isn't worth keeping. This is a good system and would not just be an improvement over what we have now, but would be actually saving money in the long run in many different ways. And so I guess I couldn't be more in support of pursuing this and finding out what the different vendors have to offer. One question I have is, Inga, you referred to the, the basic system, and then you referred to the, the bins that are part of the, when you get books returned. Unless it's a whole lot cheaper to do both parts of it at once, is it possible to install the main part, let's call it, that you described it first, and then later on add the bin for the returning book? Without too much additional expense?
Yes, it's possible. Yeah, it's possible to do them in, as separate projects.
Anything else, Bob, or shall we move on to?
No, that's good. I'm tired of hearing myself twice every time I open my mouth.
Jim?
Yeah, I have two questions, and I'll hold my comments until after the, any public, public input that we might have. But my two questions, and I think I knew the answers to both of them, but I'm gonna try to clarify it anyway. One, I'm assuming we don't really know whether Pacific Grove has an interest in moving forward with an RFID program. If we do, that that's kind of an unknown at this point because I could see that being a bit of a stumbling block.
So we did, so back a year ago when we were getting these quotes, the same vendors went to Pacific Grove as well. And at the time, Scott was the library director, and he said they were definitely interested. And he could see the advantage of trying to do it while the library was closed because the collection, the stacks were closed. But then he retired. And I know that their circulation supervisor still has the quotes, but I don't know now with their fiscal situation if they would be able to pursue it or not.
Okay. Kind of what I figured was the answer. And then my second one is, do, are we aware of, if we did decide to proceed and if the costs turn out to be approximately, you know, what you've shown here as your estimates, do we know of any particular source of funding that, that might be workable? And I could, I could see this being delayed for some time for a lack of funds. And I was curious if you have any insights into that.
Well, I think one question would be to see if the city was able to help us with any, any funds. I think with the city's economic situation right now, that's not very likely, but that would be the first question. If, if they had some ideas, then second, we have trust fund monies and the question, and it's up to the library board to recommend how those trust funds are spent, recommend to the council. And then a third possibility would be, as part of our campaign, the Friends and Foundation campaign, we might approach one of our larger donors and see if they have an interest in helping us fund all or part of a project like this.
Okay. And then my last question kind of goes back to that same timing question that Bob had. You know, in terms of if we were to proceed, whether it makes more sense to do the RFID and the AMH separately or possibly together. And in, in the way I read these charts, the payback would actually be faster in terms of the savings for the AMH than for the RFID. It looks to me like if these numbers are, you know, approximately accurate, that there might be a two- or three-year payback on the RFID and only a one- or two-year, or maybe even just a one-year payback on the AMH. And again, I realize these are rough numbers that we'd need to fine-tune, but assuming they're ballpark numbers, there's actually a bigger payback, it seems to me, from the AMH. And therefore, I'd be kind of in, you know, and I realize you have to do the RFID before you can do the idea. But it seems to me, if you're gonna do one, you probably want to do both. Just wanna see if that, if that makes sense or if I'm missing something.
I think as we reopen, we really want to have some firm things that are different about the way we do our procedures. And I think it would be helpful if both were implemented at the same time. I think that we will need to talk with some of the libraries that have installed the systems and get a better sense of whether or not we want to go forward with both at the same time. I know that in the, in Salinas's case with their new library, they, I think they weren't able to take returns initially. Well, this wouldn't be true in our case, though, because they weren't staffing their building and there was nobody to check the AMH. So, but we still have the ability to open our lobby and take things that way. So, yeah, I think we just sort of need to do more exploration to see if we can really make.
That's good. Again, Marcia, I'll, I'll hold my additional comments until after there's any public input.
So I get a couple, a couple questions. And one of them is, suppose for argument's sake, we decide not to do this, it's too expensive or whatever. I guess how, I was gonna say, how long will the current readers last before they just give up the ghost? And libraries that don't do RFID, are they replacing them with the same thing that you have? Or is there some intermediate kind of system that you could put in that's cheaper that allows you to self-check? So what would you do if these things fell apart and we didn't do RFID? I guess that's my question.
So we would need to change to a different vendor for our self-check machines and continue using our, the current method. And so.
Okay, so there, so somebody's still making those things and you can use the same barcodes, hopefully, that you have on there now.
You can also try to use your own PCs. And I know that that's possible. Koha does have a self-check option that David looked into because our self-check machines are so, you know, not, not very customer-friendly. But it, it looked like using Koha, it was not gonna be very customer-friendly either. So we haven't pursued that.
Okay.
One of the advantages that I forgot to mention, and hopefully it's in our report, if we do move forward with sharing our catalog with Carmel and Salinas, one of the things in that working group that we have of other library directors talking about sharing resources, RFID has come up frequently as something that we think we would all want to do so that it would be very seamless from customers' experience how to check materials in and out. The other thing that I didn't point out is ergonomic issues. So with the current way that materials are handled, that requires this repetitive motion by staff members. And it wouldn't be the case with RFID.
Okay. So the other question I have was about annual, annual maintenance. I, I noticed on your thing, we don't know what the maintenance is for the automated materials handler. Is there, so there's an annual maintenance for RFID going forward. It looks like it's cheaper than the current self-check system. It's actually costing less, the maintenance is less. But we don't know what the maintenance is on the material handler yet.
Correct, yeah. So we don't have those figures yet.
Okay. Okay, I think that, so these quotes that you have, this is based on, are fairly recent, within the last year or so.
Right, it was September of 2019 when we got these figures. One other thing I think I did, I mentioned in the report, but I didn't mention in my verbal report, is if we had new gates, security gates, not only would we be able to have a better customer experience when the gates go off, but one question that we've had is, we're looking for how to rearrange our staffing, is it would be great to be able to look at traffic patterns and which are the busiest times of day. The way we've done that up till now is with a clipboard and a staff and a watch. And we go out and we read the gate count at different times of the day, and then we do the math, and then we see, you know, how many people came in between 2:00 and 3:00, and how many people came in between 3:00 and 4:00. But it's a pretty labor-intensive process and you don't forget to do it consistently. But with RFID gates, you can actually, I could call up on my screen, you know, the report and, and take a look at the numbers and compare the front gate and the back gate and that kind of stuff. So you can do more analysis.
You get better data that way.
Yeah.
Okay. I think everybody else's questions answered a lot of my questions as well. So I think before we go any further, we'll do a public comment. Yeah?
So for any viewers watching, to make a public comment, please dial 831-582-6500. You'll also find this information in the. You'll also find this information in the chyron on your screen. We encourage members of the public to watch this broadcast on YouTube Live, which has a short delay of approximately 10 seconds. You can watch at youtube.com/cityofmontreal. Callers will be automatically muted until it is your turn to speak. We ask that you please turn off any background noise or move to a different room if necessary. Each caller will have three minutes. And once again, that phone number is eight three one five eight two six five zero zero. Dial star five to raise your hand and be placed in the queue to speak. And so there is a caller, just one moment, please. And I can't see your phone number, however, you are live with the Monterey Public Library Board of Trustees. And if you can move to a different room so we don't hear the meeting taking place.
I hear the reasons that are given for, for launching it. I have found that the dentistry library had problems with their RFID system and went back to the barcode system because of machine malfunctions. But for me, the biggest issue was that it has a lot of rare radio frequency electromagnetic radiation. Many points in the library, that's the case, from one, from the dropping off of books at the, at the slots. And the machines that are used by the public to check out books. And I have, you know, I have electromagnetic defenses and disabled wireless. They wifi the library in the current access area for me. And I've requested disabled accommodation to be able to use the facilities. And I have been requesting that since 2008, and to me, I have been denied. But why this wasn't installed in the library? I have issues with previous library directors and because of the network and this system has become a bit essential to the library. There's no dates when it is off. And that was my request to stop time. When I could come into the library where the Wi-Fi system was off. And I could access the facility and all the resources and private facility. Or even attend meetings, public meetings such as annadates like at the library. But each time I have made those requests, I have been denied. This is another potential service in the library that will require a little, and oil deep, part of the system cannot be turned off. Has to be on all the time. And that puts me at a human greater disadvantage. And at the Wi-Fi we're off is I have other elements that are going to be affecting me and having to take an unstable for me to be in the library. So all the time, people who contact them, they can be activated in conscious by the radiation health indicators. But they can be activated by ambient part of the periodic frequencies. And we have increasing levels of that noise around us now. And so there's now, I was very surprised when there was a presentation, there are no runs of any health attack or part of radiation. National Toxicology Program, we raised final results in 2018 of the personagenicity of RF. The Royal Health Organization, International Cancer Institute for Research on Cancer, deemed it a possible personagenicity back in 2011. And did not even have all the current research that is available now. And there are other health problems.
Thank you so much for your call today. That does end the three minute time. We appreciate your calling the Monterey Public Library Board of Trustees. And thank you again for calling in today to the Monterey Public Library Board of Trustees meeting. At this time, Chair Moro, there are no additional callers.
Okay, thank you.
Francesca, I think your screen is, is being shared, so.
Thank you. Oh, oh gosh. Thank you.
Additional discussion.
Marsha, could I, could I ask if Nat has some comments on this? He oversees ISD as I understand it, so I'm guessing he has some thoughts about this kind of technology.
Yeah. Thanks, thank you trustee Thompson. You know, this is a area, the RFID technology and is, is one that we've been talking about for quite some time. And the city manager's office fully supports the use of this technology to advance and improve efficiencies throughout the library. I personally have experienced in Contra Costa County with, with RFID implementation from a few years ago. And it truly has transformed staff's ability to, to address all the issues that INGA presented so well. Ranging from these lost books to, to controls, inventorying. And then of course, helping reduce the backlog that staff have to manually process and, and sort some of these books. Both the automatic handling system and the RFID technology are both technologies that, that, that we fully support as the city manager's office. I think as we look at, the biggest challenge of course is funding. And we recently, our finance director Lauren Lai delivered a presentation two weeks ago to city council to provide an update of how our fiscal year 19 slash 2020 budget. The, the kind of the results of that based on the unaudited report. And it, it looks like we were just on, our predictions were correct. Our total revenue loss as the city was about 11.3 million dollars. And that's, that's in the three and a half months of COVID ending June 30th, 2020. This is a long way of saying, as, as we look at this year's budget, we don't have funds this year. Both either on, all the technology projects have already been allocated for, for this year and are very limited. It's already been reduced by over $600,000. And, and so we recognize the investment. We, as a, as a city manager's office, would support any alternate ways to, to perhaps support this funding. It is an investment. I know there's, we're all very reluctant to dip into library trust funds because it is a reserve that we have for special projects. But if there's a time to go into those funds to invest in the library, this may be an opportune time. If that's something that the library board is interested in, in pursuing. So I think, I think I probably talked long enough. But if you have any other questions for, for me, happy to answer them.
Harish?
I have a question. Are the tags independent of the vendor that you go through? In other words, can we, since we're closed right now, can you just tag things without worrying about which machine we're gonna buy?
You need, sorry, you need to have the software in order to code the tags.
Correct.
Yes.
But we don't need to commit to buying a, a particular system. We can just tag all the material that we have while we are closed for customers.
Mm-hmm. Right, so you don't have to, you can buy your tags independently from the RFID vendor that you use.
That can censor.
Right, but we would just be putting blank tags on the materials. We would have to go back through the entire collection to encode those tags because we wouldn't have the software yet.
Correct.
But that is a good question to think, is there a way to break down the initial RFID process into even smaller pieces?
Bob, you have a question?
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Looking at the documents that, I'm trying to, okay, here, that INGA gave us with the estimated prices and everything. It talks about $85,000 as the initial cost to get it all set up, is that correct?
Yeah, it's an estimate, that would be the high estimate.
Okay, and that's the high end. It could be as low as 69, according to your chart. Okay, so let's just say we need between 69 and $85,000 to get it set up and functioning. And then the other things like routine maintenance and so forth, all go in. But the bottom line is with the savings, we may save another $62,300 every year as an estimate. So my question is, as Nat pointed out, you know, initially you gotta have the funds to do this. I think since part of the savings is savings in staff time. I think that's the savings to the city because the trust fund doesn't pay for the library staff, the city does. So therefore, in my opinion, it should be city money that's used for this. And my, so my question is, because I realize that city money is scarce, or scarcer than it used to be anyway. Do we need to have between 69 and $85,000 ready to plump down all at once? And maybe not from this experience in Contra Costa or INGA with her discussions with the vendors. Can this be paid over time, like you, like you would pay a car over time? You end up paying the whole amount, but you don't have to pay the full amount all at once. And so you don't have to find as much upfront. And as we expect and hope to have more revenue to the city in the future, you know, we don't think 2020 is gonna be the norm forever. Is, is it not possible then to look at making this purchase over time? And therefore being able to more easily afford it?
I don't know the answer to that question. I would need to talk with vendors about that to see if they have a way of phasing in the payments over time.
Do you mean like something like lease to own, is that what?
Or a payment plan that, that rather than having upfront costs, it's spread out over five years and almost finding a way. We could certainly ask, ask that question and see if, if they're willing to do that. We're looking at that for another technology project, actually, where there's a upfront cost around $30,000. And the vendors agree to spread it over four years. That helps push cash, the cash flow. I, I think one of the, one of the big questions will be what, what true, what, there is going to be efficiencies in terms of less staff time. But is that something that we can afford over the next, you know, couple of years? If we have, if, if this costs us, let's say, we said seven, 50,000 to 60,000 just on the RFID piece, plus labor. And you, you spread it over, let's say, three years. I, I don't think INGA is going to be able to run a library if we, if we take those dollars and subtract it from staffing. You know, if, I don't, I don't, I don't think that'll, she can still operate the, the library if we take those, those dollars, those upfront costs and reduce the staff by the equivalent amount. So that's, that's just one, one of the, the challenges that we have. And I would also, you know, ask the, the board to consider whether or not, because this is an investment in, in technology and an investment in, in, in the library overall and the customer experience, whether it would be appropriate to, to seek for donations or other, other funds for this purpose, given, given where we are. I, you know, one of the, the most alarming bits of information, you know, to share is just, I'll use the sports center as an example. You know, we, the sports center, we've predicted revenue, we knew that there was going to be a reduction in revenues. So we, in our current budget, we budgeted $2.1 million in revenues for the sports center, which is less than half of what the revenues typically is for the sports center. Well, we've been closed for the last couple of months and we've issued refunds. So the sports center is currently as of the end of August, so the two months into the current fiscal year, is running revenue deficit of negative $11,986. If you spread out the revenues that we should be getting each month, it should be $216,000. So we're currently under, under revenue, our revenues is currently off by about $430,000. So in each month that the sports center continues to be closed, it, we're, we're under budget or under our revenue projections by that much. So this is just a preview, not to scare, you know, not, this doesn't intend to scare anyone, but it's just to highlight how challenging our fiscal situation is as it relates to anything related to the general fund. And, and how there just frankly isn't a penny underneath the seat cushions that we can find to go towards this project. Either this year or likely in the next, next couple of years, especially since we still need human bodies to help operate the library.
Well, I, I think it's pretty clear that we, we can't take staff from the existing four people in the library and implement this project. That, that can't be. If we were on a recovery trajectory, we could take some of the recovery people that we were planning to hire hopefully and do that. But clearly, if we're gonna stay where we are, that, that can't, that can't happen. Okay. Any other, Jim, you had some comments?
Yeah, a couple of issues here. One on the funding. I tend to agree with Bob's comment that normal, in normal circumstances, since, you know, this would be a staff savings, it would seem to me appropriate for the general fund to come up with the, the funding for it. But since these are completely abnormal times, I for one would be willing to, to look at first, maybe trying to find a donor. Maybe one that's particularly technology oriented, that might feel like this was something that they were willing to contribute toward. And lacking that, I'd even be willing to look at trust fund money for it. So the funding is clearly a major issue, but there are some other issues that, you know, just setting the funding aside for a minute that I'd like to talk about as well. One is Pacific Grove. That's kind of a knotty issue, it seems to me, and I'm not sure how major a stumbling block that might be. But it seems to me we would need to get a handle on how to deal with them if we're gonna proceed with this. The other thing is I, I wanted to come back to the public comments about health issues. We haven't talked about that. And I don't know too much about health issues related to RFID. And I was curious if INGA or anybody else here has any background on, on the health issues that have been raised about that.
No, but I think that, if INGA, if INGA, go ahead, INGA, if you want to.
So I think it's, it's certainly something that is worth investigating further. I, I did look quickly online after receiving this comment in writing earlier today. And I saw it was something like the City of Ottawa or something that had rolled out RFID and cited a WHO study that showed that there wasn't an issue with RFID. So it was sort of a statement reassuring the public that there weren't any dangers. But we certainly would want to do due diligence and look into what the studies show about that, you know, health, any health risks.
Just to conclude my comments, Marsha, let others speak. In general, I'm very supportive of this. Moving forward, actually, I'd love to see both the RFID and the automated materials handler. Because as I mentioned before, it seems to me it has an even better payoff based on the numbers we've seen so far. But given the funding difficulty, I realize we may need to do one at a time. So in my mind, that's kind of up in the air. My preference would be to try to do both quickly, but I realize that may not be feasible. I'd like to see us get a better handle on the health issues and also the Pacific Grove issue. But other than that, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty gung ho about moving forward with this. And doing, you know, starting an RFP process probably. Although Harish's question about perhaps, could, could, would it make any sense at all to do, do the tagging while we're doing an RFID process? I mean, an RFP process? I don't know. But that, that's an interesting question that it'd be good to get a little more clarity about. But in general, I'm supportive of moving forward with a few issues yet to be resolved. But that's an interesting question that it'd be good to get a little more clarity about. But in general, I'm supportive of moving forward with a few issues yet to be resolved.
Okay, so any other comments from anybody? So let's talk about next steps here. So one of them is to move ahead and develop an RFP for exactly what it is that we want. And so I would think that Inga could spearhead that with maybe some help from a trustee. Harish, is that something you would work with her on?
I'd love to, yes.
Okay.
Can Jim be part of that subcommittee or is he overcommitted? He's got some good RFP skill.
Some skill. I moved here about ten years ago from the Bay Area, and the library there, that my local library there, had already switched to RFID about three years earlier. And the process was much smoother than the scan. I think it was a no-brainer to me.
In terms of the process, this is one I think I do feel a little committed at this point, but I'm wondering if, since Nat oversees ISD, if he might be willing to participate in the process.
Absolutely. Thanks for volunteering me, Jim. Honestly, I would be happy to work with Inga and the team.
That would be great. That would be great. And then in parallel, I think we should look at the health issues. I don't know, Inga, if you can do that, if someone else would like to take that up.
Sure, I'm happy to research that and report back on what I find.
Okay, and when, you know, when you talk to vendors, we can ask that question about can we move ahead quickly with the tagging part while we're still negotiating. But it seems like, as you said, you need the software and the readers, I would think, to be able to do that. And so I don't know how, you know, again, to segment the RFID into pieces as well. And then maybe Mary Jane and Inga can look into, start thinking about funding sources, you know, particular donors that might be interested in this or other funding sources beyond the trust.
We already started.
Yay.
We don't want to put all our eggs in one basket, but we do, Inga, has one very good idea.
Okay, wonderful. So shall I entertain a motion about how to go forward with this? Yeah, Bob?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, then I would move that the board directs the staff to pursue additional information as necessary with the goal of determining the feasibility of purchasing and installing the RFID system.
And bring it back to us next meeting?
Obviously bring it back to us, but whether the next meeting will give them enough time or not, I would leave up to them and you and Inga when you prepare the agenda for the next meeting.
A second for discussion. And I'd like to perhaps offer a friendly amendment to at least also look at the option of the, including the automated materials handler system, if you're up for that, Bob?
I was including the whole, both portions of it in my motion.
Good, good.
Okay. No other comments? We'll move on to the next item.
No, we need to vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Jim giving a second?
Give a second, I thought.
Okay, I second it, but there could be discussion.
I'm ready for the vote.
Is there discussion? Anyone else? Okay.
Okay. Trustee Joshi? Trustee Petty?
Hi.
Vice Chair Thompson?
Yes.
Maro?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we move on to the item number three, which is received report on twenty nineteen, twenty twenty fund development activity approved the twenty twenty-one fund development plan.
So I'll just say a few introductory remarks, and then I will turn it over to Mary Jane Perna, who is our interim fund development officer, who can walk us through the two or the documents that you have in front of you. So just as a reminder, typically in September, we look at our fund development program over the past twelve months and how we've done and whether or not we've met our goals, and if not, why not, and if we've changed our goals and why that might have been. And then we ask the library board to adopt a fund development policy for the next twelve months. So last year was a little bit of an aberration because of a number of different things. One primarily was that we had, we're in the process of processing the the report that we had received from a consultant. And so we didn't want to lock ourselves into a particular direction while we were still figuring out how to implement the things that the consultant had provided for us. And then also, of course, our full-time fund development officer left for another opportunity. So we had a little bit of a different plan last year, and then now we have, we've been joined by the expertise of Mary Jane, and she has a, she's studied the the recommendations from our consultant, and then she has some really great ideas for us to move forward. And so she and I have been working together, and we're pleased to present this plan. So Mary Jane, do you want to take it away?
Well, I don't know, because it's kind of lengthy, both the evaluation of the two thousand nineteen, twenty plan, and then the looking forward. I might just make a few comments about things that seem really positive in the outlook, sources of concern, and maybe a comment on the goals. The, it's really wonderful to behold the gift size increase. So that is a real pleasure. And as you saw in reading the report, even if we pull out the one enormous outlier, which was the very large bequest from the Esselsteins, if we pull that out and we pull out the next largest donor from last year, we still have a we exceeded goals within the major gift area. We did not exceed goals, as you noted, overall for the annual fund. Other things that are hopeful and encouraging are the, and a lot wasn't written into the report about this, but this is quite new, but we're having a lot more inquiries, and by a lot, I mean four, in the last month, about planned gifts, people who are interested in talking about planned gifts. And some of them tell us exactly what they're going to do. You know, I spoke to someone today who's a new one hundred dollar donor, who was shocked to hear about the collections budget and also bought some books from the wish list, she told me. But she is going to assign us as a beneficiary of one of her insurance policies, her life insurance policy, which is pretty straightforward gift. Anyway, so I'm heartened by those planned gift inquiries. I'm heartened by the sort of walk-in gifts that have occurred in the last few months. One major donor who gave generously at year end, but responded kind of spontaneously. He's very, he's a very frequent library user, so I'm sure he misses the library sorely, but he gave another gift spontaneously. One of the volunteers, this is anecdotal, but there's a number of them. So I think that the the concern and the readiness to give, even from non-donors, is we're seeing that. I am really concerned and sort of mystified by the fact that even though we solicited in the spring, many, many more people than had been the practice in the past. And I don't have the numbers on the tip of my tongue today, so I apologize in advance for that. We did not meet the, we not, we had two point four percent fewer donors and three percent fewer dollars overall. This is not about major gifts where we did better than in previous years, but if I isolate spring and fall campaigns and the spring and winter newsletters, so I kind of have apples with apples in terms of the solicitation vehicles. We didn't, we didn't meet the mark even of last year. So that's a source of concern. When one is going into a campaign, as I know, you all probably know, you'd like to see a nice, healthy, sturdy pyramid with many, many donors on the bottom, providing a firm base, but really donors of all sizes all the way up. And we've got, first of all, you know, not a very large donor base. And I'm envisioning what we've got right now is a little bit more like a sombrero with a really big broad ram, which is great for sun protection, but is not really what I hope we can work toward in the next year or two. Let's see. The goal of raising ten percent more next year feels ambitious. We're going to be relying on the widespread concern and interest in the community and the love of the library and the sense of urgency that the campaign brings to bear to hope that we can achieve a ten percent increase. And of course, we'd love to blow through that and have a wildly increased year. And also getting the donor count up to five hundred, which that slipped, that slipped two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, four hundred and eighty-six donors, and last year, four hundred and fifty-six. So that's a source of real concern. The energy that is in the Friends and Foundation these days is pretty inspiring and hopeful. They have kind of reinvented themselves in terms of the whole book sale business and come up with some new methods of creating some money. It's modest amount, but is a great marketing piece. It's really putting the library in front of people who appear to be new to us, many who aren't cardholders and who aren't donors. And the new Fund Development Committee that was launched at the end of last month and is now met twice is a source of, I think, a lot of optimism. So those are general comments about what I'm seeing, but I'm glad to try to answer any questions. Or Inga, do you want to add anything in particular?
Well, I did want to thank Harish for being part of the new Fund Development Committee. I think he's bringing part of that new energy and excitement and re-envisioning things. It has to do with Harish, so thank you, Harish.
You're welcome.
I second that.
My pleasure.
But we'd love to take questions or comments.
Jim is waving a finger.
Yeah. Jim?
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to say that, to me, this was a very helpful, useful, comprehensive report, identifying both some areas where we've done well and some areas where improvement could be warranted. But again, doing that with such a major reduction in the staffing resources available makes it all the more to me, a major success story that we've done as well as we have. So my compliments to the staff on putting together the report and also the accomplishments that are reflected here. I did have two quick questions. One kind of about online book sales. I know there was some reference that they're doing some new things related to books, and that was one that had been mentioned a while back. And is that part of what's being considered at this point?
Yes, it is. Inga, Harish?
Sure. I'll jump in and say, so this is actually something that quite a while ago, Hans, our city manager, had suggested that we look into. And we couldn't get the traction from the Friends at that time. But now the Friends and Foundation has created an Amazon store, and they have started listing things on Amazon. And so they're excited about doing it, and we hope that it will take off. So the county library system, the Marina Friends, have raised forty thousand dollars a year by having a presence on Amazon. And our new incoming president of the Friends has said she doesn't think we're going to make forty thousand our first year, but she's pleased to see that she's sold a couple of things so far.
And that's in terms of selling old books, because I know we're also getting people to contribute to buying new books. So you've got both sides going on, right?
Right. So people are donating, have donated. So this is, we actually haven't even opened up for continuing to receive donations of used materials, but this is selling used materials or even former library materials, ex-library materials.
Very good. The only other question I had was, there'd been some reference of some sort of GoFundMe or some other crowdfunding technique to perhaps be used as part of the recovery campaign or some other campaign. And I didn't see any reference to that in the report. Is that something that's still being considered?
I would say it is not on a front burner, because the front burners are pretty full right now. It, I mean, what I like about those kinds of efforts is that they're a grassroots chance for, maybe not for raising enormous amounts of money, but for involving people. But it's not something we've done any planning on yet, Jim.
Okay. It sounded to me like a good idea that might not take a huge amount of resources, but I could be way off. I'll leave that to the experts, but I personally think it might be worth considering at some point. I've seen some of those be, you know, surprising how much money they raised. So just my two cents.
I would be really welcome any of you who care about a GoFundMe type of effort, especially for a library or similar cultural institution, because I have questions about how they're, I mean, are you going to your same group of donors? Is there a new constituency for that? What kinds of publicity? Is it all just done? Anyway, I'd love to hear about good examples, because it's not something I've done before.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so any other questions or comments on, oh, Bob, on the plan last year?
Yeah, I have three. With the online bookstore that the Friends has started, is the way it works, I go on Amazon and I say I want to buy a copy of Tom Sawyer by Mark Twain. And then the Amazon website shows me all the ones that are available, both new, and then it says from other vendors, and you often see a lot of used items in that area. Is that where I would see something that the Monterey Friends Library was offering for sale? Is that where I would see something that the Monterey Friends Library was offering for sale?
Yes. And I know that the Pacific Grove is also doing this. And Pacific Grove sent out a link so that you can just see what Pacific Grove is selling. I don't think that our Friends and Foundation have done that yet because they were waiting to add enough things to make it worth your while to, you know, scroll through a few pages instead of just seeing four things on the screen or something like that.
But ultimately, somebody could say, hey, I want to go to Amazon and buy something that Monterey Library is selling and go directly to our list of things for sale.
Right. And every item that they sell, they include a bookmark. And the bookmark encourages people to make a gift to the Friends and Foundation so that people ideally learn about the organization that they purchased the items from.
So if somebody from St. Louis wants to buy a book, they don't know anything about Monterey. Once they ask Amazon, do you have this book for sale? The Monterey item that matches would be in the list of things that that potential purchaser could choose from.
Yes.
Okay. My second question is, in the report, it says Friends and Foundation has emphasized that the recovery campaign and charitable gifts generally cannot and should not supplant city support. Seems to me that's exactly what they do. The city provides, you know, from general fund money, and then what's raised through a campaign and a Friends and Foundation, you know, supplement and support that. I don't understand the statement.
So under typical circumstances, Friends and Foundation enrich an existing flourishing system. Right now, because of the extreme financial hardship that the city is experiencing, we're just, they're going to be helping with some very basic needs, such as, you know, providing funds for a book budget.
Well, either way, it's going over and above what the city is providing.
So I may have used the word incorrectly, but I think supplementation is one thing and supplant is another. And so I was imagining that we wouldn't want, well, Inga, this was discussed a little bit yesterday at the Fund Development Committee. Can you kind of summarize that piece?
I think what you were saying was correct, that we don't want to give the sense that, oh, never mind, City of Monterey, you know, doesn't fund a library anymore. But we do need to bring ourselves back and then move ourselves forward. And so the Friends and Foundation will sort of give an initial push. And then hopefully by that time, the city has, you know, things are looking better for the city and they can take back over the basic things that they cover. We're not envisioning that they will fund staff positions, for instance.
So Mary Jane, when you said supplant in the report here, you're meaning like replace? And when I said, I was thinking more that the Friends and Foundation and donations and so forth go above and beyond what the city provides. And the fact that right now the city is only providing about a third of what they usually do is an anomaly of the times in which we live. In both cases, the money that the Friends and Foundation raises and donations we receive is not replacing what the city has committed. In other words, if we get $100,000, it's not going to remove the city's obligation by $100,000. They've committed to whatever it is, 1.2 million or something for this year. But it'll be added on to. So in both cases, it's not replacing, it's adding on to. Regardless of what semantic word you want to use.
Right. Well, I think supplant is, I think supplement is a big word. Because supplant, to me, indicates, okay, the city can pull out because you're stepping in. I don't think we want to imply that.
Well, okay. But I mean, supplement means to complete something. And, you know, if we have certain needs and the city budget can't pay for all of those, then what we're raising is going to supplant the revenue for the library and bring it closer to what we really need to do, what we've been doing in the past. But I don't want to quibble over words.
Perhaps the idea would have been better expressed if it had said, should not permanently supplant?
Number three, actually, I have a fourth thing that I'm going to ask, not a question, but a request. But one question, when we have been discussing in various meetings, this whole fund development project that is in front of us here, and the phrase recovery campaign has been used. I saw that as lowercase r and lowercase c as a generic name. But now in this report, recovery campaign has capital letters like a proper noun. And I'm wondering where that comes from because I have a real lousy feeling about the phrase recovery campaign. I would much rather have it be something that is powerful and action-like, library action plan or library action rather than recovery. Patients recover from being sick. And I'm not saying that we're not sick because our resources are so limited right now. But I would like to see a name attached to what we're trying to do that implies more action and strength. And, you know, so I just wondered if this is a phrase in stone or can it be?
No, it's not carved in stone. In fact, tomorrow afternoon, we're having a brainstorm with a small group from the Fund Development Committee along those lines. The recovery campaign came about because initially the Friends and Foundation were using the term emergency and crisis.
That's even worse.
Yeah. So we're a work in progress and we're heading toward a little more brainstorming on a name to go public with.
Yeah. I think most people would like to be part of something that has action and its movement and its progress, then recovering from being sick and ill.
Right. I think they've used terms like reimagining the future and that kind of thing, transitioning to the future. So, yeah, we'll have a brainstorm and come up with something more.
The Community Foundation also had a recovery fund, I learned after we started using the word. So that might be confusing too.
Yeah, right. And the last thing I want to say is just a request. From time to time, we have asked, the board has asked Inga to provide us with a flow chart or an organizational chart of all the staff positions in the library. And I, for one, have found those very helpful. So I can visualize where all of the people are doing the different duties and chains of command and who works for whom and all that. Could you, from the Fund Development thing, come up with some sort of flow chart that would be similar to an organizational chart that shows the different sources of our funding and the different target groups? So that I could look at it like an organizational chart of staff and say, oh, okay, this over here is endowment, here's trust fund, here's city money, here's the possible sources. And they could be dotted lines. You know, all this is being developed. I understand. It's why I call it Fund Development. But if there could be some chart like that that we could refer to when you're talking about these various portions of the whole program, I would find it real helpful. So I guess I would just ask if that could be developed.
Sure. So there, just so I'm clear, so that distinctions between, say, an annual appeal and our major donor base and MC gives to kind of show how these different.
Yeah, exactly. And, you know, there was like some question of whether is planned giving, does that have to go into the endowment fund? Or could somebody say, I want to do planned giving, but I want it to go into the Friends and Foundation so that it can be used at will, you know, through the trust fund and that? And so just sort of a visual clarification.
And include where the city funding fits into the.
Oh, sure.
So you're talking about sources of funds.
Sources and, oh yeah, not how they're going to be expended necessarily, except to the understanding that trust fund can be used for more immediate needs, whereas endowment money is set aside for longer-term, sit on it, let it grow kind of thing. And, you know, the thought that we might take some money out of that right now is a very unusual, you know, point in time in history. So anyhow, I'm just asking for that because I think it would be, at least helpful to me, I know.
Do other trustees feel like that would be a useful project?
Yeah, I think so. Even if it's not a chart, because it doesn't have, you know, nobody reports to anybody on this chart. It might be more like a series of definitions about sources and, you know, how.
Yeah. Or it could be a flow chart too. So if somebody gives money through this venue or this mechanism, where does it go? Like, where does the money from Monterey gift go? And we could see that on a chart with a line from that is the source and this is a sort of a destination, not expenditures, just collecting it.
So you have certain pots, like the endowment, the trust fund, the city offers, and so.
Exactly.
Into those specific pots.
Sort of helped me decide.
Other comments? So we kind of transitioned from the report from last year into the proposed 2021 plan, I think. So we've been talking lately about the plan. Does anybody have any questions or comments on the 2021 plan? I think another thing that might be useful is, and it probably is somewhere, like the endowment committee went away, but it was replaced with the Fund Development Committee. So maybe the structure of the Friends and Foundation, maybe Doug could do that for us. So there are some subcommittees, like the Vision Committee and the Fund Development Committee or whatever those are, so that we can kind of get a picture of how the Friends and Foundation have organized themselves in this new environment that they're operating on. So I don't know, you know, who's doing the book sales and who's doing the, you know, looking for the major donors and.
In fact, it might be, at the October meeting, you might want to have the Friends president come because they can talk about the Friends and Foundation. That's a possibility, a presentation.
Yeah, I think that's probably a good idea.
We're, I'll just mention in passing, we're having tomorrow morning a conversation with another prospective Friends and Foundation board member. So that's a heartening step as well.
And we're still interested in new board members that want to help with fundraising in particular for the Friends and Foundation.
So the campaigns that you have planned for this fall, there's one going out soon, right?
It's probably going to be about a month away. Wish it was sooner, but it's been about the soonest I could get to it.
So we typically do a fall appeal and a spring appeal. We're kind of wanting to have them all be under this umbrella of a big campaign, which we're working on the name for that campaign.
But everything will, everything will contribute to the campaign goal, so.
Right.
So that we're not in a position of asking people for an annual gift and a campaign gift. Isn't that?
Yes. Okay. Any other comments? Yes, Jim?
Yes, if there's no further comments or questions, I'd be glad to make a motion to accept the Fund Development Report and approve the proposed 2021 Fund Development Plan.
Is this something we need public comment on before?
Oh, very good. You're right. I'm sorry. I withdraw my motion.
Okay. Well, just hold on to it for a minute.
So we encourage members of the public to watch this broadcast on YouTube Live, which has a short delay of approximately 10 seconds. You can watch at youtube.com/cityofmonterey. To make a public comment, please dial 831-582-6500. Again, that number is 831-582-6500. Press star five to raise your hand and you will be placed in the queue to speak. Colors will be automatically muted until it is your turn to speak. And Chair Moreau, there are no callers.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we move on to a motion? Jim?
Yes, if I still have the floor, I'd be glad to make a motion to accept the report and approve the proposed fiscal year 2021 Fund Development Plan.
Does, do you have a second? Can I second? Bob seconded.
Thank you. Trustee Joshi?
All right.
Trustee Petty?
All right.
Vice Chair Thompson?
Yes.
Chair Moreau?
Okay.
Thank you.
I also want to thank you both for the candor of the report, the honesty in it and the non-exaggeration.
Oh, yeah. You're welcome. Thank you. Yeah.
Well, good. All right. So now we move on. Our next item of August, as we move on to August. It's a report from the Ad hoc Library Planning Committee and directions to that. And Inga, do you want to say something or should we turn it over to Bob?
I think we should turn it over to Bob.
Turn it over to Bob.
Okay.
You have a document.
I'll do my best to be brief because the report is in the agenda packet. I will just highlight a couple of things. I will say right off the top that partly this report came about from the permission, under certain circumstances, being offered by the state to libraries to reopen under, like I say, certain conditions, such as limited 25% capacity and other things. And after examining many things that need to be considered to do that, the Ad hoc Planning Committee definitely recommends not reopening the physical building at this point in time. And the report pretty much explains why. And I'll just highlight a few things. The goal of what we were working on, since this is a planning committee, is how we can do what we're doing and more without reopening the physical building and make sure that what we do now and more of it builds towards the future and provide better, different, more innovative services for the future, not just looking at it as a Band-Aid. So we decided that we should commit additional resources to enhance our present services. And we pretty much know what those are. They consist of the sidewalk distribution of our material and the help that's received over the telephone by patrons when they call and they reach one of our. and they reach one of our staff members that are working right now. And then, of course, there's a lot of behind the, kinds of things that go on, but those are the two primary services. In addition, there are remote programs being developed. And Inga mentioned a few of those earlier in our meeting today, and they're all right there on the website, so I'm not going to list all those. But the remote programs would be an example of the kinds of things that we are doing. And we think that we should work toward building on those, enhancing that type of service, and making it part of our long-range plan, not just as a Band-Aid for what we're unable to do now, like we can't have in-person programs in the community room. And so this is not just a temporary thing, but something we want to develop, as I said, and I'm reading from the report, toward enhancing our present service, increasing those which could be added without opening the building. And though it would require additional staff to do that, we would be developing programs that could continue in the future with, and this sounds like a broken record, but with increased cost efficiency and cross-training of craft, of staff. So we're looking at some additional expense now to improve and enhance and increase what we're doing beyond the sidewalk distribution of our materials without reopening the physical structure, but are things that are not Band-Aids, but that could be used for the future as well. One of the downsides of considering opening the building is that besides requiring more staff, they would be required not to help patrons so much, but just to enforce, enforce health issues, testing, cleaning up all the time. Every time somebody sat on a chair, we'd have to go around and disinfectant again. Less time for providing true library services, more time and dollars spent, you know, coping with all the precautions related to COVID-19. Inclement weather is coming up, so one thing that we would definitely want to plan for is how to continue the excellent sidewalk service that we're doing even after it starts to rain. Luckily, we're not going to have snowdrifts piling up against the front door, but we may have rain. And there are a lot of downsides to moving the distribution of the materials inside, one of which is that there are people that if they came in, they might just want to plop down and plug in their computer and take up space, frankly, and not, they're not there to use the sidewalk distribution service. But in, in inclement weather, we think that setting up some protection from the weather along the sidewalk with canopies that would shelter people, canopies that we already own, so we're not saying let's run out and buy a bunch of tar. We already have some materials that can serve as protection. I also think that it would be a good idea to invest in, I don't know, a whole bunch of umbrellas. And we allow people to borrow umbrellas for 10 or 15 minutes. I don't know anybody that's waited that long even now. But if we allow people to borrow an umbrella, they can pick one up at one end of the line and drop it off when they finish getting their book and go to their car. But we allow them to borrow umbrellas, and if somebody takes it home, who cares? It's going to say Monterey Library on it. So, you know, that, I think that might be something. But making a shelter in the area where they would currently wait. So the cost of reopening, besides all of the other downsides I've just mentioned, would be significant relative to the small number of additional people that we would be serving. None of the other libraries in our immediate geographic area are taking this step. So in terms of benchmarking our activities against other libraries, this would be consistent. And also, the, 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 the capacity limit would be almost like a shut the door on the idea. Because 25% capacity, we're not even sure if that being, you can only let in 25%, as many people as you normally let in? Or does that mean you can only make available 25% of the square footage in the building? And, you know, one thing we won't do, no matter what, is let people browse through other libraries that reopened temporarily several months ago. All they did was set up a pathway for people to come in, check out a book, 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 turn around and leave again. And it wasn't really an improvement or an enhancement at all. So the, the conclusion of the Ad hoc Planning Committee was pretty strongly that we don't reopen, but that we focus on and spend a little bit more of our money on staff and other resources to improve the enhanced programs that we're starting to do now and using those as a foundation for, you know, new services, frankly, that we might offer in the future. So I'll, I'll let Inga and Marsha add to what I've said, but I think that is my summary.
Okay. Inga?
So one of the things I know the committee was concerned about was providing computer access to the public. And we talked about, you know, how we might do that if we reopened. Unfortunately, we would have to, if we started letting people in, we would need to stop the sidewalk service. And then when we looked at the numbers, we realized we would be serving fewer people. But we continue to explore how we might provide computer access. And one recommendation the committee had was, you know, looking at, is there another space in the city that might be more appropriate for setting up some computers? But we haven't pursued that further at this point. And just as examples, other libraries, I know Santa Cruz has started an outdoor computer lab. There isn't a way that we could do that, but, you know, we want to stay creative in, in looking at how we might address concerns.
Yeah, if I might add to that, I, I think we, we decided that when people want to come and use the computers, it's not necessarily for anything related to the library. It might be to write a resume or to do research. And if they have questions of the library, and they can do it through a chat, which we, you know, which we can do, or through a telephone or something else. It doesn't necessarily have to be in the library. It doesn't, it doesn't seem to make a lot of sense. When we looked at the, at the, at the sizes of the rooms and the personnel that we have, it just didn't seem to make much sense. Other comments on this? Ben?
Yes, just to pick up on that last point. I, I've read some facilities have been emphasizing that their Wi-Fi is available outside the buildings, like in the parking lot and so on. And I did see in later on in our agenda packet on the statistics, there, there was a very minimal use of Wi-Fi in the month of August. And I was just curious if that's something that, that we can at least provide, is to have people that are near the building have access to the Wi-Fi.
So that is something that we provide, and the libraries in our region got together and made a map, which is accessible online for folks to find, you know, where is the closest Wi-Fi. And also, we've advertised it through MPUSD. That was one of the things that PK Diffenbaugh, the superintendent, asked us about. And we said, most definitely, we do have Wi-Fi. It's available from 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM, I believe. We, we, it's not available in the dark of night.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Doesn't the city of Monterey have, doesn't the city of Monterey have a free Wi-Fi also?
That's a good question for our Assistant City Manager who's here, and he might also have a comment about ideas for computer access for the public.
Yeah. We, we, there is, outside of the library, there are some locations that do have free Wi-Fi, our city hall campus, for example, the conference center, which is now closed. So I know, you know, as, as we've been discussing, the bookmobiles, other, there's other, other tools that folks have used to ensure access to, to those. What, what's nice, the main cable service provider here in Monterey is Comcast, and, and they have free Wi-Fi. They provide even to those who are not Comcast customers. So it's just part of access, public access that, that they provide free of charge. And, and you can actually go online and find all those hotspots. But, but otherwise, I, I think one of, as many of you know, our approach here at the city has been a very, a very cautious approach to how we reopen. We've been extremely careful of going as far as things like not opening up our pools and indoor facilities, and only doing so if we absolutely need to. The library curbside service is, is a great service that, that we cherish and continue to support. But I, I think, even though we're allowed legally to open the doors, we're doing so in a cautious approach. Our, our preschool program, for example, we're, we're exploring and hoping to open up in the next couple of weeks with one class at a time, no more than 10 students each. But that's because it, it allows for, the, the contacts are limited. It's within a specific cohort. Having, having folks type, once you start opening up computers and let people touch equipment like, like Bob so, so described so well, it, it requires quite a bit of staff time to clean and, and maintain. So Wi-Fi is definitely one, one way to go. And, and perhaps, you know, checking out laptops and other things might be another approach too. But hopefully that answers, answers your question. Some of our other sites do, I will say, and I'll have to double check whether they're still on, but our community centers historically have had free Wi-Fi. Hilltop, Park Center, Cassinob Oaknall Park Center, Alastair Park Center, and Schultz Park Center all have, have free Wi-Fi. I, I will double check. I believe it's still on, so if you go outside and sit outside, you can still access that. But all the facilities currently are closed inside to the public.
Okay. Other, other comments? Okay, so before we entertain a motion to accept this, I guess we, we should do public comments on this as well.
For viewers watching, we invite you to make a public comment by dialing 831-582-6500. Again, that phone number is 831-582-6500. Press star five to be placed in the queue to speak. We encourage you also to watch this meeting on YouTube Live, which has the shortest delay of approximately 10 seconds. You can watch that at youtube.com/cityofmonterey. And Chair Moreau, there are no callers.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we can move on to entertain a motion to accept this report?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, you have a second?
Second.
And, and now we need to vote.
Trustee Joshi?
At our discussion, at our discussion, I'd just like to thank the committee and the staff. You know, it's a difficult situation we're navigating, and it seems to me we're taking a prudent and yet constructive approach. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I just also want to comment that our next step in the committee are to talk about what, what we will look like, to start talking about what we will look like when we do reopen. Because there will be a time when this illness is gone and life will go back to normal, and we want to be ready for when that happens. So that's, that's where the committee will move on to those discussions. Bob?
Yeah, and, and the hope is that what we do in the short term will provide a foundation on which we can build for future programs and services, given what we know is likely to be the case in terms of funding for at least the next handful of years.
Okay, so now we're ready to debate, right?
Okay, trustee Joshi?
Hi.
Trustee Petty?
Hi.
Vice Chair Thompson?
Yes.
And Chair Moreau?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now we move on to informational reports. And the first one is the financial report. That is Inga. Move over to you.
So my computer screen says I've lost my network connection.
It is mine.
No, we still see you.
We still see you and we still hear you.
I can't see you, but I will just proceed. So basically, we have a financial report that just shows where we are in terms of, for the general fund.
Now we've lost Inga.
Yeah, we lost Inga. She has frozen.
Maybe just momentarily.
Hopefully.
See, it's not just me. Inga's frozen for all of you.
Yep. Right. Yes. Another, another case for Zoom.
Yes, absolutely.
That might be her internet connection in the library. Francis, are you in the library?
I am not.
Okay.
Oh, I've lost now too.
Mary Jane also must have been cut out as well. She just indicated having problems.
I, I had a similar problem, but it came back.
Okay, I think it's going to come out and come back, come back in.
And it says Inga has left the meeting.
I think she's got tried to come back in again.
Not as well.
And not as well.
Maybe we should adjourn and add these three informational reports to our October.
Yeah, sorry about that. I think we've, we've had some issues with the city, the city's internet connection is a little off. I'm not sure if other people are having the same issue. I'm not sure if other people are having the same issue.